Decisions will be the retention of effective teachers. All personnel decisions will be made based on the following factors in order of priority. Individual performance. Significant, relevant accomplishments and contributions. Relevant special training. Mr. Daley has not even yet been informed what he's going to be teaching at Wayne Memorial. So how we can stand here as a district, even though my typical role is not to advocate on behalf of students, as a human being, as a mother, as a former teacher, and as a union leader, I do not see how we can say this is benefiting anyone at this point. Our teaching conditions become your students' learning conditions, and you can't afford to lose any more students or any more high-quality teachers in this district.
Next we have is Sarah, is it Boyce? Boyce, Sarah Boyce?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Boyce.
Boyce.
I'm an English teacher and department co-chair with Dave Daley at John Glenn. In my 25 years of service in Wayne Westland, I have often heard the phrase, "Do what's best for kids." The decision to transfer Dave Daley from our department is not in the best interests of our kids. I'm very concerned about the flagrant disregard for the impact this decision has had. Why does this transfer have to take effect October 30th? We have not been given a reason. This haste is unprecedented, unwarranted, and unfair. Dave has 112 students in AP English Language, College Composition, and English 11, who will all be displaced. We are halfway through the semester. We are embedded in our curriculum and content. How can you invalidate nine weeks of instruction and then move students into a new course where they will receive only half of that content? Many other students will also be switched into classes that they did not choose. Our administration today proposed dissolving three senior English electives, which are required for graduation. How will those students fill those requirements? Also proposed today is moving our struggling readers in English Strategies to Phys Ed. How does that serve those students' needs? How is that what is best for kids? Our students deserve the opportunity to finish a class that they started. Our students deserve stability. Our students deserve consistency. This decision does none of those things. It is not what is best for kids. This decision does not align with social-emotional learning or the mental health care that Wayne Westland purportedly supports, at least on the website. We have spent nine weeks with our kids cultivating relationships with students who are still fragile from the pandemic. Dave Daley in particular has cultivated very strong bonds with his students, as evidenced this evening. He is an asset to our department. He is a committed educator and a highly valued colleague. Our students are not faceless widgets. They are people. Your teachers are not abstract numbers. We are people. We are not data in a spreadsheet. Decisions in education cannot be made solely based on finance. I urge you to remember that. In education, we should always do what is best for kids. In this case, it is keeping Dave Daley in our building with our students. Thank you.
Next we have Eric, is it Hindsy? How do you pronounce it, sir? Hindsy, Eric Hindsy.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Eric Hindsy. I've been teaching at John Glenn High School for about 23 years now. I've seen a lot of people come and go. A few years ago, I had the privilege of meeting my colleague, Dave Daley. And after observing him across the hall from me, I've noticed that he's very dynamic. He's a master teacher. He has built strong relationships with his students. He is well-liked and respected by all of his students, and you can see some of them here tonight. This didn't have to happen in the middle of a semester. Other students are suffering because of it. Like Mrs. Boyce said, administration is dissolving literature classes. Now, I teach a class on speculative fiction. It's ironic, because I was going to teach a novel called Fahrenheit 451 next month. A novel about literature becoming illegal, dissolving. It's a very sad time to see this happen. But we have a lot of weightlifting classes, so if students need to go somewhere, I guess there are other places. I hope my students are okay tomorrow after I tell them that our class is being dissolved. Please remember, this mistake can be corrected. And I hope you do the right thing and let it be corrected. Thank you.
Alexandria Jimenez, and I can't see because it's kind of... How do you pronounce your last name? Jimenez-Greenshields. Greenshields. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alexandria Jimenez-Greenshields. I'm a senior at John Glenn High School. I'm also the senior class historian. I'm speaking out today on behalf of not only myself, but also I feel passionate to speak out for the John Glenn's body. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. In recent news, we have discovered that our beloved Mr. Daley will be transferred to Wayne Memorial, a high school effective Monday. Personally, I cannot say that I've had the opportunity to be his student. We've only actually had one formal encounter, which was the one diversity club meeting I made it to last year. But his character and name are well-known throughout the school, and I've only dreamed of having the opportunity to have my education developed by him. This recent switch, not only... This recent switch will not only be a stark change for our school, especially this being at the end of a card marking in the middle of a semester. If you don't know already, as if anyone has already said. Mr. Daley teaches AP Lang, College Comp, and also has three English 11 classes. These classes will now have to be taught by substitute teacher, or the... You guys don't really know what's happening, so, you know, who knows? And what's left is wondering is like, what now? What steps will be taken to ensure that these kids continue to be educated with the experience, support, and love that Mr. Daley provided them? I think it speaks volume that this is coming from a student that has never had Mr. Daley as a teacher, but only hears and lives through the experiences told and passed on by his now and previous students, which are somewhere here today. How fair is it to his students that he is leaving before the semester even ends, before they can even finish their class? Getting deeper into this, not only will the change on balance, the everyday schedules and relationship that his students have built around him, but affects the outside classes as well. Personally, I'm taking a women's study class that may be dissolved because of this recent sudden change. As a senior, I rely on this class and electives like this to fuel my passion, which has also brought me up here today to speak and feel as though I can advocate for myself and others. And most importantly, provide me with the credits I need to graduate high school. Taking another weight training class is not going to get me walking across that stage. Taking gym again is not going to have me walking across that stage in June. This women's study class and these electives that we choose to take, like College Composition, are what, it was what at the end of the year is going to have us walking across the stage in June. Thank you. That's my time to Alyssa Tyson.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Tyson.
Excuse me just a moment, Alyssa.
No, I'm sorry.
Is this the next speaker?
She wanted to yield her time to her, what she had left.
Is that all right, or do you want me to...
Before you leave, will you do that?
Yeah, of course.
So we have record?
Of course. My name is Alyssa Tyson, and I could not sit by and watch slide by slide as you talked about fundamental values that our students are supposed to have, about respect and about educational, you know, other educational values. But respect is the main one. I've been taught since my elementary schools and how I have... I'm sorry. And how community is such a huge part of my learning and my just entirety at my school. And Mr. Daley has taught me about culture and about community, and it is just... I've always wondered why my school doesn't have as intertwined of a community as I thought it would have. And now I realize that it's because of how devalued some of our teachers are and how devalued some of our students will become because of how easily thrown away these extremely high... I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Extremely respectable teachers. I regard Mr. Daley as someone who is... I want to become someone like him. Someone who can deeply love learning and teaching and not be there for the financial aspects of it. He has... I'm sorry for being close. But he has repetitively told us over and over... I was in his English 11 class last year. Repetitively told us about how he genuinely cares about teaching his... Every single year of his children, and how he wants them to grow and become better people and just learn. I apologize for my informal response. Thank you all.
I'm not sure. Do we have Andrew Ambrose? Were they here earlier? Oh, no? Okay, and then we have, is it Katrina Luzadas?
Hello, everyone. Good evening to the board and everyone that is here. I'm here to talk about the transfer of Mr. Daley. But first, I'd say how disappointed I am that I and many other students and teachers have to stand up here and talk. Mr... I've been a student of Mr. Daley since freshman year. And that I have not taken... I've not taken his class in freshman or sophomore year. He's a teacher not only through just like academics, but as being a role model and being a leader. During freshman year, he was an advisor for Rags for Diversity, a student organization advocating for the rights and diversity in John Glenn and the community. Last year, I was his AP Lang student. And this year, I'm one of his students in College Composition. When I heard the news on Sunday night that he was involuntarily removed, he will be involuntarily removed from John Glenn, I couldn't believe it. And thinking about it now, as I sit up here and look at all the teachers that I have and students that... Teachers that... Sorry. As I look up here, I can't help but wonder if these teachers will also be removed from John Glenn, if they will be involuntary displaced from John Glenn. And even though they're filling gaps in other schools, there's still gaps in students' education. We... I'm speaking not only as a student, but as a person who has known Mr. Daley for four years. That we... That he is more than just a teacher at John Glenn. He's a role model, a leader, an advocate. And it's so rare today to see a teacher stand up for students' rights and be empathetic with us and understand us and genuinely talk to us. Last year in AP Lang, his class was very difficult. But seeing how he... The feedback that he gives to his students and to me through my writing and the way that I act, the feedback that he gives is life learning. In my room, I have taped up essays that he has graded 100... Like he has given a 100%. His feedback is more... I'm sorry, I don't have... I'm not... I don't have a script for any of this. This is just like pure emotional... But... I understand that you have your own responsibilities, you have your own jobs. Like you can't just be... You can't just come to John Glenn 24/7 and witness the impact that Mr. Daley and other teachers have made. But you were a student before, and you can... You're still a student now. I'm equal to you. Everyone in this room is equal to each other. We are all students, learning. I hate to think that you only think... I'm sorry. I hate to think that the school board only views students and teachers as money, as if they're expendable. They're not. We are people, and it may be hard to understand where the teachers and me and the other students are coming from. But as a board, as a board for learning, I please ask, I ask you humbly to please see where we are coming from. I... I'm not only here to advocate for Mr. Daley, but I'm here to advocate for the rest of the teachers. Not only at Wayne Westland, but in other schools and other districts. I thought this community was a place where it put students first, where it put education in... Sorry. I thought this was a community that put education first, that put learning first. And just... Just seeing how Mr. Daley and other teachers are being displaced from schools is just appalling. And like I said before, I can't help but think that my other teachers may also be gone. Will this be my last week with them? Will this be the last time I'm able to connect with them? That's what I have to say.
And it looks like the last one, I think, is Julie Kayzen? Okay, thank you. And that will be all for the comments.
Will you please fill it out afterwards? Certainly. Come here and douche yourself.
Basically, after seeing the budget, I can sense why the administration is frantically trying to find money. In our negotiations two years ago, the school board mandated that the... Those in charge keep our fund balance at 15%. They've spent $18 million more, and it didn't go to salaries. I know that's the brunt of the costs. People, but that's what this is. This is all about people. You got students, you got teachers. $18 million over expenditures. So administration did not follow the board's mandate to keep the fund balance at 15%. Okay? That's why all these changes. We had the same thing happen with foreign language. Wayne Memorial, Spanish teacher left. They cut down the classes, all the way down to two classes. Teacher at John Glenn left. His five classes were cut down to three in the hopes of finding a teacher to do both. That was a full-time job. We didn't look for anybody. I can see why you are frantically looking to save money because you overspent it. You overspent the money. That affects every single teacher. In our contract negotiation, we said if the contract, if the fund balance stays at 15%, each of the teachers get an additional 1%. But based on that, that's not going to happen. We are hiring a lot of other positions elsewhere, but we're not certain what they're actually doing. I'm sorry to say, it's in upper administration. We keep seeing new position, new position, new position. It's overspending. It's not the fault of salaries, benefits. It's overspending. I hope that changes because you just affected 700 teachers. So please, board, I don't think we can give administration a great evaluation this year. You can't, because they disobeyed your mandate of 15% fund balance. Disobeyed. We all agreed on that, and that's what we based our bargaining on. Okay, we're going to make sure. There's no way we should have gotten down, what, 9 million? There's no way we should have even gotten down to 15 million. That is something you really got to look at. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Next item on our agenda is the review and recommendations. Members of the Board of Education begin with Ms. Abney Mitchell. Thank you, Luanne. Mel?
I'd like to congratulate the John Glenn football team, the marching band. I'd like to congratulate our new staff member. And I definitely want to say something. I am so proud of my students. It makes me sad to see my students upset because I understand what it's like to have a valuable teacher. For instance, Senior Marquis, I remember you from Wayne Memorial. You're one of my favorite... You know, you weren't mine, but you were always there. And like to show the dedication and employee morale, that's really important. You know, sometimes you got to look at the risks versus the benefits. You know, even though on this paper, isn't truly definite. Because I don't want to cause problems with our students. You have kids in AP, those are specialized classes, specialized training. And I definitely understand with the social-emotional learning. My son went through it. He went through COVID, got straight E's, didn't care, wasn't nothing I can do about it. But then I took him out, put him over at Wayne Westland Community High School, and he changed the As and Bs just to change an environment. So just that little bit of a change, having somebody believe and hope. He changed his whole personality. He went and got a job. I mean, because he went through a really bad depression. So I definitely understand what the students are going through. This is really horrible. But I mean, maybe we do need to look at the policies, you know, because we don't want to lose good staff members, you know, on policies and procedures. And if there's, you know, in the inconvenience, like the children are saying with the graduation, you know, with AP and going to college, you got to have those certain classes. And just to move one for the next, to be emptied, just, I don't know. So I definitely would like to ask the policy committee to see if we can look at policies, because at the end of the day, you don't want to lose good staff members to other school districts. And I don't want my kids hurting, because these kids are passionate. They love this teacher. The teacher is passionate, and you don't find a lot of male teachers as well, you know, to be passionate about the kids in the district. And this is my family. I've been in Wayne Westland forever. My son, Wayne Westland, my nieces and nephews is Wayne Westland. So I mean, if we can, like I said, look at policies and procedures in the future. I know you guys have, you know, contracts coming up to see, because that is a problem. You don't want to lose a bunch of staff. It's already hard to hire people on administration and things of that nature. So I definitely just wanted to kind of look into that, because it is, you know, starting to be quite a concern with our staff members. And then that's it.
Thanks, Mel. Chief Hinn?
I have no comments.
Dr. Weaver?
I would like to use my few moments here just to say to Mr. Daley that I have heard of your great work and the great work of all of our teachers throughout the district. And this is certainly an emotional issue. And in saying that, I want to say that we had better take care of our teachers and work with sensibilities that will help us to move forward as a district. It is plain to see, and I'd like to thank the union for coming, it's plain to see that the union will rally support for one. And so I want to say by this that we do need to take a look at our policies as it pertains to employment in our district and also movement in our district. Thank you, Mr. Daley.
Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to John Glenn High School football program. I know it's been quite a long, long while. I think my youngest son might have been the last one playing when they made the playoffs. That's quite a while. Also, congratulations to Wayne Memorial High School marching band. Remember when I got into the school district as a teacher? I think they had 14 people in the marching band. So where they are today is certainly a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment. I want to thank everybody for your comments tonight. Those of you that know me know that I've had roles in this district that put me in a lot of difficulties. difficult positions. This is one for me. But I do want to say, Mr. Daley, thank you, and congratulations for what you've accomplished in our community. Uh, clearly, you've made a difference. Clear, and you should be an example for all of us. I used to be in that classroom. Probably would like to have been observing you. It's a hard job. Uh, and when you get that kind of, uh, recognition and approval from your colleagues, I think that's important. We obviously have a lot to look at. That is our role. Ours is oversight. We don't, we don't make management decisions. Ours is oversight. So we will take, and, and thank everybody for your comments. We'll take them under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht.
I'd like to take this time to thank the students who presented, you presented yourself wonderfully. As I was sitting and listening to you tonight, I was thinking Mr. Freeman. That was my Mr. Daley. And, uh, I still remember just about everything he said to me because about ten minutes into his class, instead of taking notes, I was like this all the time, listening to him talk about history, which I'm still addicted to. He made a definite impact in my life because when I was in high school, when I was a junior in high school, I lost my dad. And, uh, Mr. Freeman, who I had never had a personal relationship with before, he was there for me emotionally, just like Mr. Daley's there for you. And so, as Mr. Albrecht said, and, and I'm, I'm going to take a little bit of difference, we're not even oversight. We're here to do one or, one of two things, hire and fire superintendents. And by the way, we spend the money. Just so you know, who spends the money? It's not the administration. You saw tonight Julie Campbell asking us for money. We spent the money. It's this board that spends money. I hope that you take this experience with you in your life and try to be the person that makes that impact on people that you interact with. And I hope Mr. Daley, whether he stays with the school district or gets angry and leaves, continues his work to teach people. This is how you do it. As one of the students said earlier, they don't know all the reasons. You don't know all the reasons. But there is a reason. We don't, we don't want you to be unhappy. We want all the teams to win. We want everything to eat at lunch to be beautiful. And we want all the buses to be faster than every other school district's buses. But you have to make changes. One of the MEA reps got up and talked about teachers that have been transferred over the last three years, I think she mentioned five. We have eight hundred and fifty teachers working in our school district. So with that, thank you, students.